Welcome, everybody. We'll call the regular meeting for the Belvidere City Council of October 18th to order. Uh, the clerk will call the roll, please.
Brereton.
Here.
Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
McGee.
Here.
Mulhall.
Here.
Porter. Prather.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Thank you. If you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for our many blessings that we have. We pray to thank you for our freedom, our country, our community. We ask that you bless and protect our first responders, our military service members, and we ask that you give us tonight as elected officials the wisdom, the strength, understanding, and compassion as we conduct our city's business this evening. In Christ's name we pray, amen. Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody registered for public comment this evening? I don't think we do. Nobody's turned in a form. Okay. We don't have any public comment here this evening. However, I did want to make a comment, here a couple of months ago, Mr. Robert Salsito, you may recall that he, we helped celebrate his 100th birthday, here not too long ago. We started at the American Legion and we took a tour over to his home at Four Seasons. And Mr. Salsito had passed away on October 4th. And I'm so grateful and so thankful that we were able to recognize him, recognize Mr. Salsito and for his accomplishments and his, um, his service during World War II. So, we do have an obituary here for Mr. Salsito, and if you bear with me, I'll read it. "Robert R. Salsito, 100 of Belvidere, passed away on Monday, October 4th, 2021, in Belvidere. He was born August 9th, 1921, in Texas. He was a proud U.S. Navy veteran who served from 1942 to 1945, during which time he received five battle stars and serviced the USS Ash Tabula. He worked for Oscar Meyer for many years and enjoyed working on boats, including Ed Claussen's, of Claussen's Pickles and the boat of Harold Meyer. He was a senior member of the Chicago Power Squad, where he taught classes on boat safety. He spent his free time on boats as a captain for numerous people. Robert was a loving husband of the late Nell Goral, adoring father of the late Gail, and Jim Hegarty, beloved grandfather of Laura and Eric McMahon, and the late Robert, fond brother of Arturo, the late Ray, and the late Armando. He will be missed by many, especially his fur friends Baxter and Spaz. A visitation will be, was held on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, for Mr. Salsito." And I did want to read that because he was a true hero. Okay. Item number four, approval of minutes. Uh, we have the, can, I have a motion in a second for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of October 4th as presented, please. Motion by Alderwoman Prather, second by Alderman McGee. Is there any discussion, any errors? Anybody see anything they didn't like? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. Uh, we have no public hearing this evening. Under item six, special messages and proclamations, tonight we have Pam Lopez-Fettis with Growth Dimensions. Hi Pam, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. Um, I just wanted to provide you with a lot of activity that's been happening over this last month. In the past month, we've had four new projects that we've submitted to the state of Illinois. Um, this includes a data center, an aquaponics agricultural company, one for electric vehicles, and advanced manufacturing focusing on the automotive industry. In addition, we've worked with several that we've been following up on. Uh, two I wanted to note was Project Yukon and Project Kelly, both in the logistics area, uh, which we have been identified as a potential location, basically on the shortlist for those two projects. Um, with Project Kelly, we spoke with them, about them for, um, for several months now. Um, and this is a logistics company focusing on the food processing industry. And we wanted to let you know that we hope to, to share some more news by the end of this month. Um, in addition, we've participated with the region on Manufacturing Day, which has actually turned into Manufacturing Week and Manufacturing Month, so depending on how you want to look at it. But it's really to celebrate our manufacturing, our community. We started by working with, um, uh, having a, uh, working with the high school systems and providing them with some information awareness for the manufact-, um, in manufacturing. Um, they, the North Boone School District had about 20 students that visited CCSI and looked at some of the products that they made and talked about the job opportunities in that field. Then they followed up with a luncheon that was supported by General Mills and, um, then they provided some, uh, basically some additional information about the manufacturing industry. We're also working, um, to help celebrate the manufacturing industry by, um, putting out some spotlights, um, featuring some of the products that they made, uh, make throughout Boone County. We really wanted to highlight that this is a great place to live, work, and play. So, we've provided a lot of this information on social media and our website. So, if you know of any businesses that are interested in participating, we highlight their videos, their pictures, or their products. Um, we've also worked with the school system in order to help, um, them identify internship opportunities. This is for seniors. Uh, for the school districts, there was a grant that they received that helps provide, uh, youth, usually 17, 18-year-old seniors, um, with some opportunities in the workplace. Uh, so if you know of any businesses, we're reaching out to some businesses in Boone County and trying to identify some opportunities so they have some more hands-on awareness. Um, in addition, we've been supporting, uh, the health department and the school district to provide information about health safety, school safety, and, um, uh, measures and health safety. We're really just facilitating this through Forward Boone. Um, the first one is on the Forward Boone website. The second one would be Wednesday, October 20th, from 4:30 to about 6:00. Uh, and the last one will be Tuesday, October 26th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30. So, if you want information, you don't have to pre-register. You just go on the website and, and link in. I just wanted to also let you know that we are looking at next year and how we can track, um, our impact and provide you with some standardized data and information. Um, so we'll be presenting them soon, a draft. And if you have any data points that you'd like to see from Growth Dimensions, please feel free to contact me.
Does anyone have any questions for Pam? Alderman Porter.
Just one quick question. There's been some talk about some things happening over at Stellantis. Do you know anything about that, or can you comment on that?
Well, there's been a lot of rumors about what's happening at Stellantis, but, um, one of the ones I've heard is that they're offering jobs elsewhere. Is that what you're referring to? Um, so, we've heard this on Facebook and, and comments that, um, people at Stellantis have been offered jobs elsewhere. Well, there is somewhat true that there's been jobs offered for those who are unemployed, that are not returning, and that their unemployment is exhausting. So, they've been offered other jobs so they are not unemployed, and so they find other employment. They, they've been given opportunities to relocate in another location to work for the same company. My understanding is that there is also an opportunity for some of those individuals to get called back if that should present itself. At the same time, the state has been very engaged, our elected officials, our municipalities, um, everyone, um, organizations, business organizations and other organizations alike have been very supportive in trying to increase Illinois' competitiveness so we could keep the automotive industry here in Belvidere and also help them grow. So, you've probably also seen and, and heard a lot of, um, there's a lot of articles written on how the governor and the state is looking at incentives and other opportunities in order to reduce costs for EV vehicles in Illinois and also to provide incentives so businesses that have been investing in Illinois, uh, can, will continue to stay in Illinois. So, that has been gaining a lot of, um, headway, and my understanding is that there should be a package presented to the, um, General Assembly this October. You're welcome.
And I will say that I have chatted with, um, or contacted, uh, several state representatives, state senator, and also U.S. Congressman, and, uh, I want to say that, uh, State Representative Vella has been very, very helpful, uh, with, uh, his communication with Stellantis and then relaying that to us and also, uh, his communication with the governor's office. So, I am still optimistic. Uh, I think that they, they recognize that the state, the governor recognizes that, uh, we have an auto manufacturing plant that's been here for, since 1965, uh, started producing vehicles in 1966, and that, uh, doesn't really get any bigger, uh, for this, for the city, uh, for the, uh, district that they represent and also for the region. So, um, they have been, uh, he has been very, very helpful. And I have had some contact with, uh, the governor's staff, so, um, I, like I said, I'm optimistic. So, I know Pam's been involved in a lot of that, a lot of communications as well, so.
We, um, also had talked to Stellantis, our representatives, and they are very, um, optimistic about some of the packages that have been coming through.
Any other questions? Uh, sorry. Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you. Um, this really isn't about, for you Pam, um, it's just while we're on the topic of Stellantis, kind of more of an FYI maybe for, um, Chief Woody. I know that the Windsor Plant has announced they're, um, getting rid of a shift, and that's where we make the chargers. So, um, they're citing the chip shortage. So, I don't know, um, if that's going to affect our being able to order squads, but it might be something to, um, keep in mind.
Yeah, the chip shortage is affecting a number of industries, not only the automotive industry, but, um, anything that has automation, um, involved in it. So, it's every product, furniture, in fact. Or you probably hear about furniture being, and weeks and weeks, um, delayed. I mean, it's, it's affecting everything, so.
Any other questions for Pam? Okay, hearing none.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. And we also have Mindy Long here this evening from, uh, the Ida Public Library. Mindy? Thank you for coming.
Okay, nothing really earth-shattering at the library. I gave you the budget versus actuals. I handed out, that's our percentage of where we're at for the library. This is our six months at the end of this month. So, we start in May and we end in April. So, just wanted you to get a little picture of where we're at percentage-wise with our budget. We're doing really well expenditure-wise. Um, we did, we did our annual property, two of our properties that we own, and we do have an expense and a water heater for the church, which is being replaced this week, and that's going to come out of line item, I think it's 6101, rental expenses, which we had budgeted for, so. We're good there. Um, the elevator, our operating certificate expired October 5th. I got a 60-day extension on it till December, and we're waiting on parts. We're talking about shipments, but that's what we're waiting for also. It's taking a good four weeks to get the microprocessor and all the units in that we need. So, as soon as those get in, we also have to move our servers from the elevator room to upstairs. Somehow they got moved down to the elevator room, which is a no-no, so. That all has to be taken care of. But hopefully before December 6th, we're going to have it all done. It has to be done because we won't get another extension on the elevator, so. We're working on that. Um, statistic-wise, we had 5,189 new checkouts this month for September and renewals, which are up from 4,900 in August. So, we had a big increase there. We fulfilled over 1,100 requests from other libraries, mostly Woodstock, Juliet, Maringo, Moline. We had library card signup month in September. We added 124 new patrons, and we added 171 new items last month to our collections. Uh, we have an app. I don't know if any of you know, we do have an app, a Prairie Cat app. You can use it on your phone. Just go to Google Play or the Apple Store and look for Prairie Cat, and you can find Ida Public Library, and you can use that app. We had 340 people use it last month, which is quite good. Started out slow and we're building up slowly. People are getting the hang of it, so. We did have an opportunity to participate in a reader or author event with Glencov New York's Library. We were able to sign in on a Zoom call with nationally-known, uh, historical fiction author Susan Meisner, and we had several of our patrons join in on that, so it was a really nice event. And they're, uh, going to send us more events from New York as the year goes by, so. It's kind of nice of them to share with us. No cost to us. Um, event-wise, we have, um, we're participating on Saturday in the Braveheart Special Olympics. We have a table out there. We're going to be handing out some buttons and some bookmarks and just kind of get ourselves known out in that area. We have, um, a spooky story walk going on right now at the Belvidere Park. The story is creepy carrots, and you just walk along with your children and read the story. Starts at the Baltic Mill. We have a choose-your-own-adventure going on in our own lot on Kishawaki Street, where they kind of go around through the hay bales, and what they choose is the next sign they go to. Well, we have a virtual costume contest. Uh, submit your photos by the 25th, and there'll be a little prize. We have a pumpkin decorating contest going on. We got a really generous donation of pumpkins from TJ Farms, and we're giving them away free, first come, first served to kids to decorate and bring back for our voting contest. And then, of course, the big event is trunk-or-trait. We're having trunk-or-trait in our lot, October 29th, 4 to 7. We have a lot of interesting trunks signed up. I'm not going to spill the beans, but there's a lot of interesting people going to be there for, to hand out candy for the kids. That's about it. Nothing else exciting.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mindy with, uh, library? Uh, Alderwoman Frank.
How is your new, um, preschool lady working out?
She's doing very well. She's, she's just getting ready for all of her storytime. She did her first, uh, video storytime. She did two stories very well, so she's getting all set for the winter season. We're planning our winter programs. Our new winter guide should be out end of November, so we're in the process of planning now, so.
And about how many kids does she have when she is working, or does she work every day?
We don't have in-person programs right now. We're still doing virtual programs. We are working with the museum to, uh, bring preschool kids there to the top floor, to the little agricultural room, and Anna's going to let us have, conduct storytimes there. Our meeting room is just so small. I mean, it's probably a fourth of the size of this room, and it's just too hard to get all those kids and all those parents in during COVID and, you know, have a decent storytime, so. Yeah, we're still going to, we're going to do them in the museum, though she's going to let us take advantage of that space, so. Anything else? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mindy.
You're welcome.
Nice to see you.
You too.
Right, moving on. Uh, we have approval of expenditures, general and special fund expenditures, and water and sewer fund expenditures. Uh, we'll take the general and special fund expenditures first. Could I get a motion to approve, uh, the general and special fund expenditures, please? Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Flurry. So, just to be, uh, so we're accurate, those expenditures are in the amount of $2,736,392.18. Uh, is there any questions regarding these? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we'll vote to, all those in, to approve them. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. And then we have, uh, water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $740,016.52. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderwoman Mulhall, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any questions, any comments regarding the water and sewer fund expenditures tonight? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? When the clerk calls the roll, please.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed, thank you. Moving on, item number eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. Uh, let the record show, items A through H were placed on file. Um, I did want to point out, um, I had been approached by a couple different aldermen regarding, uh, questions about, um, the expenditures regarding overtime, and they wanted a reason, uh, hope to get a reason on there. So, if you look at this, there's Shannon, uh, the, um, our budget director, finance and budget director, had, had put these in, uh, the overtime for reasons. So, when you look at them, uh, there won't be a blank. I know in the past, it was said that, uh, they weren't able to do that, but, uh, Ms. Hanson was able to do it. And so, when you look at these, you will see a, a reason on them. And that is, um, on these, um, police overtime and fire, both, so. Just so we know, I think that'll make, uh, maybe give us a little less heartburn, so. Okay, uh, and then, um, moving on, we have item I. Uh, we have minutes of the committee of the whole building, planning, zoning, public works of October 11th, 2021. Could I get a motion in a second, uh, to pass those as they are written? Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman Snow. Uh, any questions, concerns, comments? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you. We have, uh, number nine, we have no unfinished business. Uh, item 10, we have for first reading, ordinance 551H and ordinance amending section 98-15 of depositing material on the city right-of-way of the city municipal code. We have item B, an ordinance for 552H for first reading, and ordinance amending chapter 150 zoning ordinance, section 150.1005. Uh, signs exempt from regulation under this section. Specifically, the amendment is in regards to the number of flag poles and flags that may be located on a property. And we also have on the agenda tonight a motion to reconsider ordinance number 550H. That was an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within a neighborhood business district, uh, of 1746 South State Street. We had received a letter from, and I, that's on your desk, from Alderman Porter, asking for a reconsideration of that vote, and so I would entertain a motion, uh, to allow him to do that. If he would want to make a motion, that's up to him, and I would need a second. Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by, oh, I'm sorry?
Which side did Alderman Snow vote on in the original motion? Has been made by some of the voted on prevailing side.
Okay, okay. Motion by Alderwoman Freeman, second? Yeah, you can second it. All right, we have a motion in a second, uh, so that opens up discussion. Alderman, Alderman Snow.
So, at this point, all we're going to be voting on is whether to reconsider, and this will come back in two weeks to actually vote on the ordinance itself. Is that correct?
That's correct. If the motion to reconsider is successful, it just puts it back on the next council agenda, the exact same position it was on before you voted on it two weeks ago. So, it just, uh, puts it over two weeks, and you take a final vote at that point.
Any other questions? Oh, Alderman Snow.
So, um, if we do approve this, um, tonight to reconsider and come back in two weeks, can we have it put on the next committee meeting so it can be discussed beforehand, um, as opposed to just doing a final vote?
Yeah, you could, uh, table it at that time, I suppose, and send it over to committee.
I think he's talking about next week in committee.
Next week.
Well, next week you want it. At next week's committee?
Right.
It's up to, put it, if you, if it's on the, you want it on the agenda, we'll put it on the agenda.
If it moves forward, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. Alderman Porter.
So then, when would we have the actual discussion on the, uh, reason for the reconsideration? That'd be next meeting?
Uh, you can, the floor is open. Any questions regarding the reconsideration? That's all that's being talked about here this evening, but any discussion regarding that, uh, re, your reconsideration is open for discussion?
Okay, I guess I'm a little confusing, so I would like to discuss a little bit more about the actual ordinance. Can I do that tonight, or is that next week?
That'll be, that'll be next week. That'll be, that'll be next week. Mm-hmm. Yep. Won't be able to get there unless there's a reconsideration. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote, and those in favor of motion to reconsider of ordinance number 550H will answer aye, and those opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Okay, motion passed. Thank you. And that will be added then to the committee agenda.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. All right, and we have motions forwarded from the Committee of the Whole Building Planning Zoning and Public Works of October 11th. Motions of, motions of Public Works, Chairwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to approve the proposal from West Alice Blue for the purchase of a Canon TX4100 MFPZ36 large format color scanner slash printer at a cost of $8,700. The cost will be split between the following departments. Planning Department, line item 01-5-230-7020 for $3,000. Water Department, line item 61-5-810-6410 for $2,500. Sewer Department, line item 61-5-830-6410 for $2,500. And Engineering Department, line item 01-5-360-7020 for $700.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee then. Any comments, any discussion? And this was the low bid. They were 8,700 low bid, and then next was 97.95. The next bid was $10,495. And the last bid, highest bid, was $10,976. So, hearing no other questions, comments, or concerns, all those in favor will vote aye, and those nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Okay, motion, okay, motion passed. Thank you. Continue.
B, motion to approve the proposal from Total Water Treatment Systems in the amount of $7,859 for a new water purification system for the wastewater treatment plant lab. This equipment will be paid for from line item 61-5-820-6010.
Okay, thank you. And again, this was a low bid. As Chairwoman Freeman said, $7,859. The next bid that we had was for $10,097 even. So is there any discussion, any comments, Okay. Hearing seen none. Those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mulhall?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you. Continue, Chairwoman Freeman.
Thank you. C, motion to approve change order number one from Sega Ag in the amount of $143,000 for the Appleton Forest Main Project. This work will be paid for from the Sewer Depreciation Fund number 06-08.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Is there any questions regarding that? Any Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Brent, how low are we getting in the Sewer Depreciation Fund?
Right now, we're at $700,755. There's been some expenditures made for our 2018 improvement project, which are all loan eligible, so we'll get, be reimbursed for those expenses. And then we'll pay that back over time in the loan payments when that begins.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Snow?
So, obviously, I got the email and printed out my version of the contract and stuff. And as usual, it's a lot of, on a layman's terms, a lot of yada, yada, yada. But I didn't see anything right offhand that I could put my hand on as to the issue of whether or not they should have proceeded without some kind of real approval from us as far as the way it continued on through the drilling. So, so I don't know if Brent can shed any more light on that whole topic for us.
As far as continuing with the work?
Yeah.
So, I guess, and I apologize for not being at the committee meeting. I was out of town. But I'll just do a little recap for you for the, from beginning to where we're at now. And then we go from there. But the project actually started back in 2012 with our easement work. Those were finally acquired, and the final engineering was completed in 2018. Soil borings took place in fall of 2018, spring of 2019. And our first contract was signed in September of 2019. Our second contract was, notice to proceed was dated September 7th of 2021. There was some contract language added on the second time around as far as risk and existing conditions, article 15.1. The parties acknowledge that this contract shifts the risk of extra construction costs due to concealed, unknown, unusual, or otherwise unforeseen conditions at sight to the contractor, that the contractor has considered such in making its bid, and that the contractor expressly waives its rights under the Online Public Construction Contract Act. And then we are now at the point where the bore has been completed, and the bore took extra time from what the contractor originally anticipated due to the fact that they hit rock material. And they notified the city in writing of a changed condition per the IDOT requirements. At that time, they had, the contractor had a subcontractor that was doing the boring portion. They were from out of state. Basically, methods and means are up to the contractor to determine how to proceed, given the fact that soil where the rock was present, where they ran into it underneath the river, and there was some fracturing there, and some of the mud from the drilling process was actually coming up staining in the river. Basically, the only option available to the contractor was to go deeper, which puts you into rock. So that decision was made by the contractor to proceed in that manner, to finish the work, and the boring was completed. And it was completed to the line and the grade according to the project. There was a supplement that, or additional handout in your packets tonight, shows the line and the grade of, of the bore as completed. So at this point in time, yes, technically, notice to proceed as far as a change order goes, typically you do those ahead of time, although in not all cases does that happen. All depends on the contract schedule, depend on the nature of, of the, of the change and, and the process that is going through to get that done. I think this, in this case, I think due to schedules and to probably do, to the benefit of the contractor, he felt it was incumbent upon him to continue on the process. And really, there was only one, one option, I think, available to him was to go deeper through the rock. Now, the benefit to the city in having the change order for consideration at this point in time is it's a known fixed cost, and we can apply those costs for exactly what was done for that extra work. If you were to negotiate that change order ahead of time, there would have to be, there's some unknowns there that would be covered by that contract cost, so you may end up paying a little bit more. But the fact that, and how this one played out, we know exactly that they took the extra time it took to go through the rock, and therefore, we can apply those costs in that manner. So, similarly, there's another change order coming up next. And again, that work was just because of the timing in order to get that work done, we proceeded to do that as best as removal. But, so it kind of, it, it goes typically, I would say, yes, you do the change orders ahead of time, and get those all worked out before you go. Have we done them in the past? After the fact, we have. And sometimes through the process and the scheduling, it just works out that way. So I guess at this point, obviously, the council has two options to consider. They can either approve the change order request, or they can deny the change order request. And I think approval of the change order request will provide us with, with a contract that will be complete and ready for payment by November, November 7th, which is a completion date due in the contract, and at a known cost. The alignment and the grade of the bore is complete as specified, as I mentioned previously. The contract also provides for the removal and reconstruction of a storm sewer manhole due to the, but because of the accuracy of the bore as completed, I believe that, that manhole will not have to be removed. I think they will be able to make their connections without disturbing that structure. And that will provide a potential credit of $15,000 to the contract if that is indeed the case. In addition, the drop manhole connection specified in the contract at a bid price of $15,000 may be modified to allow for an inside drop connection. And if we do that, that could be another potential credit to the contract. So I think having this finished and completed, like I said, this work started, effort started back in 2012. So having this completed online and working will be a benefit to us to have that done. If the change order is denied, then I think that could possibly result in the contractor exploring all his options to, to recover his additional costs. I apologize for my notes. And any legal action that may, may come of that will delay the completion of the project. There will be considerable time possibly that could be required to respond to any of those court proceedings if it goes that far. And if it does go through that process, and the city is even successful through that process, that we, we don't owe any more money, we still have to have a project that needs to be completed. And we would need to hire a contractor to finish that work, and those costs would be, as of yet, undetermined. And again, for reference purposes, the second low bid on this project was $493,735. So even including the change orders, and I say change orders because there probably be a change order number two, which will result in some credits to the project. Once we're all done, I think we'll have a, a project that is, is a very good project, one well done by the contractor, and still, overall, considering how much time and effort and with the budget, I think, responsible for the city.
Alderman Snow, and then Alderwoman Freeman?
So Brent, in, with your vast experience of being in the public works and being director, it would be, it sounds like your suggestion to proceed with the payment.
That would be my recommendation, yes. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Brent, there was justified concern with the council that it was done first and then expected to be paid later. We didn't have any idea that they had even run into any problem. I don't think that it was, you know, they hit this, they hit this rock one day, and then said, okay, we're gonna go ahead and do it the next day. I think they probably contemplated that, and it would have been nice had they given us like a heads up, like, you're probably gonna be getting another expense or adding to this. I think it's not a good habit to get into to, to just have contractors go ahead and do work, and then come back and say, okay, we did it, now pay us. It, it's a concern.
It is, but I think, again, you have to look at these on a case-by-case basis. And I think in the overall scheme of this particular project, the fact of what they did and completed the work is going to be required, no matter if we, if they would have came to us and said, we gotta go through the rock, and we would have said, no, we would rebid it and do it again. It would have to go through the rock. The way, just the way this project played out, we really didn't have any choice. And hindsight's always 20/20. And I think from now on, whenever as rock is present in a job, if we have to do another bore, we will specify and bore it through the rock. I think you'll probably end up with a better job, overall, a longer lasting job. And it'll be more expensive, because it does cost more, obviously, to go through rock than it does soil. But I think the, the end product will be more cost-effective.
City Attorney had a comment?
Just briefly, not a legal comment, but directly to Alderwoman Freeman's comments. The contractor actually did make us aware fairly quickly that they had hit rock, and they would have to explore a different alternative. We didn't know what the cost was going to be at that point. There were some numbers thrown out there, but nobody really knew what it was going to cost. And the problem with change orders in this kind of project, and specifically this one, is if they had waited for us to process the change order, not only would their cost have increased, potentially the city's cost could have increased as well. Because if you make the assumption, at this point, it's an assumption, make the assumption that we have to pay them for any extra work they did, we also have to pay for delay time, potentially. So, by proceeding, if we have to pay them the money, they're actually saving us money also, in the long run. Ideally, yes, you guys should be in loop at the front end every single time. It just didn't work out this time.
Brent, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman McGee?
I've got a question for Attorney Drella. I read the contract, and I'm not an attorney, but it looks to me like they should have been aware that there was problems before, and it looks like it's pretty detailed as far as what, what they could run into. And, and that's what happened. And I, and I get that they subbed it out, you know, to somebody else, but I, I feel it was their duty to fill in the subcontractor that they could come across this rock that Apollo ran into. Isn't it pretty clear in the contract that, that that states that?
The contract, caveat, a couple caveats. Number one, I'm not a geologist, so when I get this wrong, forgive me. And the second caveat is I don't want to get into a great deal of legal advice in open forum. If we get to that point, I'll probably want to do that privately, one-on-one with you, or if there's a threat of litigation in executive session. But, that being said, the bid specs were virtually identical to the bid specs for the first go-around on this project. And it did not necessarily call out bedrock or call hard rock. Forgive me, Kevin, what's this, not shale, but?
Bedrock.
Bedrock. It called out the presence of cobble. It called out the presence of soils. It did call out the possibility of boulders and bigger rocks like that. And I want to say it said someplace that there may be some bedrock, but it did not specifically state that, hey, you guys are gonna hit bedrock and you have to dig through it. So that was not in either one of the bid specs, because quite frankly, we didn't know about it. The borings that we did do showed the existence of some cobble and otherwise good soils.
And it, it did show the bedrock of the depth, but it showed it as a depth deep enough that you could go stay above the bedrock and be in the soils and not be into it. Just to clear up on, with Apollo, I don't think Apollo ever hit bedrock. I think they ran into some cobbles, they ran into some other problems. I think they ran into some cobbles, they ran into some other problems, they got offline out of the easement, but I don't think they ever hit bedrock. Whereas, the second crew came in and, again, when they got underneath the river, they did indeed hit the bedrock. And I think there's probably just a shelf higher where the elevation came up in the river. And being underneath the river, we couldn't do soil borings or anything there to determine that. So you wouldn't have known that until you hit it.
Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you. So this work has been done, and it was obviously a unique project. So my fear is going forward that it encourages contractors to low bid and then say, well, we can really underbid this, and then we can just do it anyway, and then come back and say, well, it cost us more and we already did it, so you, now you owe us this much. Otherwise, we're just going to have to sue you.
And again, this, I think, is a very unique project, as it turns out to be. I don't think, I don't share that same concern going forward with other projects. I do not foresee that happening.
And going to that comment, your typical contract of this nature, and many of the engineers in the area do this, they incorporate the IDOT general specifications by reference. Those general specifications do allow for consideration of change orders of this nature in your average construction contract. In order to qualify for that, though, they've got to show some kind of a change from the specifications that were not called out in the specifications. Either requested add-on by the city or some kind of, in this case, the best example of a subterranean bore is something that was underground that nobody anticipated and they ran into that causes their increase. What they cannot do is say, we're going to do Project XYZ, do Project XYZ with no changes, and then say, give me more money. They cannot do that. There has to be a change. And where I do run a worry is that, you know, what qualifies as a changed circumstance?
And just so that I'm clear, and I want this to be part of the discussion, when I had come into office, Apollo had actually tried and were not successful with their bore. So it was my understanding that we had borings that were done in order to identify the rock. And as well, it was my understanding that whenever we rebid this, I know one of my biggest, my biggest concerns was that when we have somebody else come in and do this, that we make sure and inform them that they had had issues out there with rock, whether it be cobble, bedrock, or what have you. But it was my understanding that there was borings that were done and maybe they didn't identify at all. But did we in fact, were we in fact specific about the issues that the previous company had run into and that they were, they had failed to be able to make that? I know that part of it, it's my understanding, was that they did get their bit stuck and they weren't even able to get it out. And they had to have the, I believe, the company that they rented the machine come and able to withdraw that.
Correct.
And a third, and another thing is, do we, in our contract, this work is not completed yet, there's two connections that are to be made, correct? So those two connections, were they, was there a time specific date that those were to be completed as part of the job being complete? Because without those connections, the job is not complete.
Correct. So as far as the status on the project, the bore has been completed, the connections have not been. And they had 60 days, calendar days, to do it from their, from their notice to proceed, which was on September 7th. So they have until November 7th to finish that job. And I'm confident they'll be able to finish it within that timeframe.
Okay.
As far as the soil borings go, the soil borings were done before as part of the bid package for the first job. No additional soil borings were done prior to the second job. So we still relied on the first set of soil borings. However, the information that was uncovered literally by the first contractor was included in the specifications. But again, that was more cobble, cobble and small boulders, not even that, probably more cobble, I guess, would be the accurate description of that. Again, I don't think Apollo ever hit bedrock, per se. They indicated to us that they, again, this is Apollo, that they got stuck, you know, they couldn't get it out. And they asked for permission and received permission to excavate in the middle of Hickory Bill's Island to try to recover it. They were never able to recover it. So when they left the project, the manufacturer's representative came back out and simply backed the bit and everything, backed it right back out of the hole with no problems. So that information, as far as the cobble and stuff that was encountered the first go-around, was included.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Snow.
If I recall correctly, at this point, Apollo were still at status quo as far as cost to the city for what work they did and/or did not complete. Is that a fair assumption, or is that still in big limbo land?
At this point, the city is cost-neutral on that contract. Okay. Marty's off to the races.
Alrighty. All right, any other questions before we go forward here? Okay. Hearing none, then we do a motion out of second, correct? We did?
Is that a committee?
I'm sorry, yes. Okay, so if there are no other questions, no other concerns, then we will go ahead and vote on the motion, on the motion out of committee to approve change order number one from SAGA Ag in the amount of $143,000 for the Appleton Forest Main Project. This work will be paid for from the SURE Depreciation Fund, number 06-08. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay, when their name is called on the roll.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
No.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Nay.
Okay, motion passed, thank you. All right, we have, moving on, we have item D, motion to approve the change order request for Packard Excavating in the amount of $7,000. I'm sorry. Alder, Alder. Chairwoman Freeman, would you, would you finish for me? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start over. D, motion to approve the change order request from Packard Excavating in the amount of $7,875 for the additional asbestos abatement required for the lease building demolition. This work will be paid for from line item number 41-5-110-7900.
Thank you, Chairwoman Freeman. You did, you pronounced it much better than I would have, so thank you. Okay, any questions on that motion out of committee regarding that change order? Okay? Nothing? Okay. Hearing none, then all those in favor will vote aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
No.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Continue, Chairwoman Freeman, please.
Thank you. E, motion to approve the proposal from Kahoy Pump Service in the amount of $34,952 for the new pump and motor at well number five. This work will be paid for from the water depreciation account, number 04-09.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions on that motion out of committee? Any questions, concerns, anything unanswered? Okay, hearing none, all those will vote yes. If they agree, any opposed, will vote no, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Okay. Continue, Chairwoman Freeman, please.
F, motion to waive the competitive proposal process of Section 2-700 of the Belvedere Code with respect to the purchase of a bucket truck.
Okay. Do we have any questions or concerns regarding that out of committee, that motion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk, when the clerk calls the roll? You've got to give me a chance. Thank you, thank you.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Motion passed. And item G, Chairwoman Freeman.
G, motion to authorize the Public Works Department to purchase a bucket truck for the street department at a cost not to exceed the $155,000 budgeted. This truck will be paid for from line item number 41-5-752-8300.
Okay, that's that motion out of committee. Is there any discussion, any questions? Director Anderson.
Thank you, Your Honor. On your desk tonight, I put a proposal. We have located a demonstrator, a new demonstrator unit, and the price on that is $144,780. That's the good news. The bad news is it's located in Oklahoma. So if council approves the motion tonight, we're going to send representatives out tomorrow to take a look at it to make sure it's going to do what we need it to do.
Okay, and I, I would say that's not going to cost us $10,220 to go get it. Okay. Alderman Snow.
So I see it says it's got a working height of 42 foot. What, what does our current one do? Does it?
Current one is 42 also.
Okay, thanks.
And we have 42 just because of our streetlights. Currently, our highest streetlight is 40 feet, so that gives us an extra two feet.
Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you. So was this budgeted as a capital expense, so therefore, that line item would move to capital?
Correct, this is coming out of the capital, yes.
Alderwoman Frank.
Brent, how much do you expect that this is going to cost to go to Oklahoma to get it?
Well, actually, we can't get it. We're going to the factory is where we're going, and that's where it's at. So it's just a matter of, they're going to be driving out, spending, probably spend the night and drive it back. And so it'll just be meals and perhaps overnight. It's about an 11-hour drive out there, so. It'll actually be, if we like it, if it's going to meet our needs, then it actually goes to the dealer. And the dealer has to do the prep work and stuff before we get it.
So will we incur overtime?
There will be a little bit of overtime, yes.
Thank you. Alderman Snow.
So at this point, if we do go with it, then somebody goes back out and gets it. It will be sending another trip out.
We will not be doing that, nor the dealer does that, as silly as that sounds. But because it's at the factory, it's, we can't get it, they won't release it directly to us from the factory. It's got to go through the dealer.
So the dealer is located where?
In Hodgkins, Illinois.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, those, all those in favor of the motion on the floor will say aye. Any opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Brereton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mulhall.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed, thank you. Item 11 is irrelevant, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion by Alderwoman Prather, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Porter. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, we're adjourned, for the record, we adjourned at 8:03 PM. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.